All right. Start. All right, so good to go?
Yes.
All right, welcome to the April 5th, 2023, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a Citizens Advisory Committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning. Issues such as comp plan and zoning ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Derek Day. I am the vice chair, standing in for Chair Asino tonight. And we will move into introductions, starting online. Commissioner Pesenger?
Kevin Pesenger, District 1.
Helen Wheatley, District 1.
Doug Carmen, District 2.
Scott Nelson, District 3.
All right, I think we are ready to move on to the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Commissioner, I would like to propose an amendment to the amendment. I would like to remove the approval of the March 15th minutes in order to them to ensure that they're and I would like to propose that we perhaps extend the timeframe by five minutes for discussion.
Do we have to second that and then move agenda?
I could only barely hear the second half of the motion.
I'm sorry, I was just proposing to add an additional five minutes for discussion in case we need it on the February 15th meeting.
Second the motion.
Call for vote.
Mr. Pesenger?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson? Commissioner Carmen?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
Commissioner Day?
Hi.
The motion passes, we will postpone the March 15th meeting minute approval, and we will add five minutes to this agenda item. Okay, with that, do I hear a motion to approve the February 15th meeting minutes?
I would like to propose some amendment.
Make a motion first, yeah.
Oh, to approve the oh, I need to move, I need to move to, do what?
Approve first, we have to, we have to get, we have to get a motion on the floor first, and then you can
Oh, then I can amend it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I moved, I moved to accept the minute, or approve the minutes from February 15th, 2023, and accept the audio as the official meeting record.
Second.
Second.
So now do I get to move to?
Yeah, the motion's been moved in seconds to, is there any discussion?
Yes. I think I have some amendments to the minutes that I would like to make, and I'm sorry that I'm not hyper well organized about it. But they would be on page three in section seven on the work session number two, Thurston 2045 update. So should I just start with what I might like to see proposed for change?
How do we want to take this so that we can capture it?
Yeah, I'll get it up on line or
I'm just thinking so that we can make sure that we capture the changes. I just see a lot of markup on your copy.
Oh, yeah, there's way more markup.
Okay.
Yeah, but there is a fair bit of markup. Do you have a paper document? Have you send it to me? Get it up on my, up on the screen, excuse me.
I can't tell if anything's happening, I can't hear anything.
Sorry, no hold music.
Okay, we're on hold.
All right, do you want to take us to a line, Helen?
Yeah, so page three, line 20 seven. So it says there were discussion, there were questions by the Planning Commission. You know, there's that sentence, and then a discussion ensued on whether they asked, well, that's a typo anyway, on whether the ask for prioritization really gets to the Planning Commission's goal of recommending enough resources to the Board of County Commissioners to update the important optional elements. So there are a few changes I want to make to that sentence. One is to delete the words "to update the important optional elements." Okay, which sentence? Not the, not the sentence, I mean, it's partly because I think maybe there should be a sentence introducing this concept of prioritization that gets discussed. But since there's not an introductory sentence for that, I'm proposing to just delete the words "to update" the important optional elements. And then I have a couple of other changes.
In that same section?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, that sent, like, that whole sentence, a discussion ensued. Well, yeah, it's like, I'm trying not to do a major revision, but to be happy with what it says. So what I'd like to do is say, a discussion ensued, period. And then I would like to say, Commissioner Wheatley, I was thinking about the right word to say protested or expressed concern. I think Commissioner Wheatley expressed concern that prioritization is not an acceptable process. And concern was expressed, and I don't know if Commissioner Day would want his name added to it, that prioritization is not the right frame. Because that was the words that Commissioner Day used.
I think that's accurate.
Okay.
I think you've got it.
And then the and I wasn't quite sure how to put this, because then the sentence gets too long. I want to keep that language about the Planning Commission's goal is to recommend, is to, I thought might fix it, is to recommend enough resources to the Board of County Commissioners. And I didn't want it just to say to update the important optional elements, but to, to update or to do the comprehensive plan update. But I don't know if other commissioners agree with that. Or if you want to keep it to the optional elements. It's an important difference to me because there was further discussion about like how much money was going to go into the CIPA process and stuff like that, so.
I guess I have a hard pride, now that I see it, the word goal, we don't have a goal, we have a record, we're recommending to the commissioners that they provide the funds to do the job.
Yeah.
That, that wasn't a goal, it's just
Yeah.
So we recommend, we recommend to the commissioners, we don't do other things.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy with that, because that captures the discussion well. So I'm happy with that. It recommends, well, that discuss, there was discussion that the Planning Commission recommends and that there be enough resources. The Planning Commission recommends that there be enough or resources, or, well, we didn't do a recommendation, though. That's the problem. So we discussed that we would like
But a concern.
That we would, that we had a concern that there be enough resources. I think the reason that it was put as the goal was because we were saying that's what we would like to see. I, I talked about how that was the contrast to prioritization, that instead of prioritize, rather than prioritizing, and that was your comment about that, that assumes scarcity. And so then we said it's what we would like to see is that there be sufficient funding for everything that's necessary.
I think if we said something like, it's not an accessible process and concerns expressed was expressed, that it was not the right frame to convey the Planning Commission's recommendations, period. I think that's
Yeah.
accurate. The Planning Commission's recommendations. And then I think you could probably skip the rest of the, delete the rest of the sentence.
Yeah, sorry.
I did it.
Well, we're trying to summarize a lot of discussion here, so. Okay. Okay, so are we just deleting all of the discussion about what, that we discussed that it's the goal to
I don't know if
Be sure there are enough resources?
I mean, that, I think there was, that was intention, I don't know if it was a goal.
Yeah, the intention, yeah.
Maybe if there's a sentence in there about discussion regarding the intention to ensure that it's fully resourced or adequately resourced, and then we've got the actual numbers, the voting numbers on the components later in the next meeting. Story is told over the two sets of minutes.
So there, there was discussion about the intention?
Discussion regarding the Planning Commission's intention to recommend adequate resources for adequate resourcing to the Board of County Commissioners to update.
That sounds good, you're so good at that.
So intention, discussion?
Let's see here, so. I would move that, I'd say the Planning Commission discussed I'd say the intention, remove goal of recommending, instead of enough, I would say adequate, instead of resources, I would say resourcing to update the important optional elements. Is that good, is there?
That sound, yeah, that's, that's, you're, you're really good.
It's like I do this all day.
Okay, and then I did have a little bit more. That was line, once we're ready. Are we ready? Yeah, so it would be line, around line 40. I would put in Commissioner Pesenger asked why equity was not mentioned in the presentation.
Is that an additional sentence?
Yeah, I would, I would start that before Ms. Tippel also confirmed equity. So I would insert that before. And then, yeah, Commissioner Pesenger asked why equity is not mentioned in the presentation, period. I think that summarizes what he said, unless he has a different opinion about.
I'm good with that.
Okay, and then I would add the hold on, I can't read my own writing. Oh, well, again, this is an attempt to summarize. Commissioner Wheatley expressed concern that the survey will see, yeah, never mind, just leave it at that. And then and then there's a bit of a correction, I think, in line 45, 44, 45, it says the plan will be asking part of the work plan will be asking the Board for funding of consultants to help with the housing element and the environmental impact statement. And I listened to the minutes, and it sounded to me like public, I'm not sure that the environmental impact statement. I can't remember if, if it said that consultants would help with that, but I'm pretty sure it said that they, that funding of consultants to help with the housing element, comma, public participation, comma, and maybe then, and the environmental impact statement. But I'm pretty sure public participation was included in that.
I don't remember that.
Yeah. Um. Well.
I, I thought I remember staff saying consultants would not be involved in public participation, but maybe I missed her.
Hmm. Well, I wonder if that needs another look then, because it's sound, and it might have just been hard to hear on the
Yeah.
Do you know, like, can that be corrected with any knowledge, like, is it? Well, I guess Ms. Tippel
It'd be in the scope.
It is in the scope of work. If that was specifically articulated at that point in time, I can neither confirm nor deny that.
Okay. I believe it was articulated that public participation was included in that.
I remember having at one point
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to look at my notes here, because this is an important question.
No, Commissioner Pesenger, I believe disagrees, and I would, I would side with him just on the fact that Maya Tippel is not here tonight to confirm, and I don't think it's a highly important whether or not she said it that night.
Yeah, that's fair. I think I can be done with that.
Okay, and do we consider that an amendment to the original motion? Or is this a, okay, so would the original maker of the motion considered a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. That's all we want to do. And then all right, I think we're ready to vote to approve.
Right. Commissioner Pesenger?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Day?
Hi.
All right, with that, I think we're moving on to the Public Communications agenda item. Is there anybody signed up for a comment? Nobody in the room?
We do have one person on line.
And it looks like Ms. Farrell. All right, do we have three minutes on the clock? Perfect. All right, Phyllis, you're muted, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself, and we'll start your three minutes.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Phyllis Farrell, I live in unincorporated Thurston County in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood. And I previously commented on Zoom procedures and parameters. I've been told that you, the Planning Commission, are the ones that set the parameters for, for Zoom meetings. And what I've asked for, and I'm seeing it now, this time for the first time, the ability to see who else is on, on Zoom, so I do appreciate that. In the past, we haven't been able to tell who else was in attendance and, or to see any faces, so I guess now we, we do have that, and a pleasant surprise, so thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Phyllis. And I don't see any other folks online, so with that, I believe we can end our Public Communications agenda item and move on to new business for our work session on Open Space with Marissa Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners, Marissa Westman here with Thurston County Community Planning. I'm here this evening to discuss the Terry Open Space Tax Program application and to request a public hearing for May 3rd, 2023. In review, the Open Space Tax Program is guided by the Open Space Taxation Act, which was enacted by the Washington State Legislature in 1971 under RCW Chapter 8434. This act requires county governments to conserve open space lands, and tax reductions are granted if qualifying properties are maintained in an open space state. In accordance with state law, all property shall be valued at 100% of its true and fair market value unless exempted by law, and the Open Space Taxation Act authorizes this exemption. Applicants must meet the criteria in RCW 8434 and in the Thurston County Open Space Tax Program Guidelines to qualify. And if criteria is met, then tax reductions are based on a change from highest and best use to current use with a public benefit rating system score determining the percent reduction. While the Board determines applicant eligibility in the program, it's the Thurston County Assessor's Office which completes the tax reduction process. Additionally, supporting documents such as habitat management plans must be submitted with the application materials as evidence that the resource applied for exists on site. The application and discussion this evening is for the Terry property for enrollment in the significant wildlife habitat area resource category with no public access. James Terry Jr. wishes to enroll all of his 12.84 acres and open space, open space, and there are no structures on site to exclude. This property is located in the southeast Olympia area on Spurgeon Creek Road Southeast, which lies south of Elm Highway Southeast, north of Rainier Road Southeast, and is immediately north of Fox Ridge Lane and unincorporated Thurston County. As this map shows, Spurgeon Creek, which is a type F fish bearing stream, the largest tributary, largest lowland tributary of the Deschutes River, runs diagonally through the property. Spurgeon Creek on this site is mapped by Department of Fish and Wildlife as supporting Deschutes Coho, which is a candidate species for federal listing as well as a critical areas ordinance important species. The majority of the property also contains emergent wetland, which is a habitat Coho depend on during their rearing life stages, as do some other salmon in their juvenile stages. While they're not terribly visible on this map, there are also two ponds which are adjacent to Spurgeon Creek, which provide additional still water rearing habitat as well as waterfowl habitat. Incidentally, some of the criteria for enrollment in significant wildlife habitat area resource category include assessment and habitat management plan created by a qualified biologist as well as the presence of at least one CAO important species or habitat on site. The Terry property is located in the Deschutes Water Resource Inventory Area, or RIA 13, and also in the Spurgeon Creek Basin. The property is also zoned in the McAllister Geologically Sensitive Area District, or MGSA, and the purpose of this district in a nutshell is to prevent the loss or contamination of groundwater and potable water sources for the general public. As it happens, wetlands are very good at carrying out this function, both for water storage and natural filtration. The applicant proposes to conserve this property as fish and wildlife habitat, with some invasive weed management also proposed. And this map is just giving you a little bit better look at where those two ponds are on the property. And you can see, Spurgeon Creek runs northeast to southwest, basically through the entire site. And this is just showing how basically all but maybe 1% of the property in the northwest corner is mapped with wetland, and my site visit did verify this. The entire site basically is covered with wetland vegetation, in addition to areas of standing water. In addition to Coho, a variety of other species which are categorized are CAO important species. In addition to Coho, a variety of other species which are categorized as CAO important species or Department of Fish and Wildlife priority species are documented to use the site. That would include the big brown bat, great blue heron and wood duck, and other fish species doc, documented in Spurgeon Creek include fall shenok salmon, chum salmon, and winter steelhead. Now, a proposal for conservation for the Terry application includes conserving the property for fish and wildlife habitat and to protect a critical aquifer recharge area as well as provide aquatic connectivity. Uh, they would also conduct some invasive weed management, um, species such as reed canary grass, Himalayan blackberry, Scotch broom, and English holly within two hundred feet of the creek and ponds. And this would be done mainly through mechanical removal, so activities such as mowing, natural shading, or rubbing of vegetation. Motorized access would be limited to drier periods of the year to avoid water contamination or soil erosion and would only be conducted if necessary for conservation efforts. And finally, monitoring is proposed to take place every five years for at least the next twenty years, just to assess the efficacy of the weed control as well as general site conditions. The Terry application meets the criteria for enrollment in open space based on the following factors, which are included in RCW eighty-four thirty-four and in the Thurston County Open Space Tax Program Guidelines. The property contains fish bearing stream and wetland habitat known to support a CAO important species. The wetland habitat covers the majority of the property and supporting documents, including a habitat management plan, which was prepared by a qualified biologist to assess the site, were included with the application materials. Enrollment in the Terry property in open space creates an opportunity to preserve wildlife habitat for fish species which are a candidate for federal listing and to protect water resources for the citizens of Thurston County and would also be in alignment with the objectives of the McAllister Geologically Sensitive Area District. After reviewing the application materials, the Terry application meets the criteria for the classification of twelve point eight four acres, qualifying it a fifty percent reduction as open space land for current use assessment. Commissioners, I thank you for your time and hearing this discussion, and I ask you to move to set a hearing, a public hearing for May third, twenty twenty-three on the matter of the Terry Open Space Application, are there any questions?
So, do we have any questions?
Yeah, I want to go back to the salmon part, there actually is not a native salmon run on that, on Spurgeon Creek.
Oh, you mean as far as the Coho, um, the Coho salmon species having, having originally not been native to the, or Deschutes River? Yeah, they, they weren't originally native to, to the Deschutes River or to those populations, but they are now considered a candidate for federal listing, which would make them, which would qualify them as a critical areas ordinance important species, but that is, that is true.
According to the policy decision, federally, you're not allowed to distinguish between the basically the indigenous and non-indigenous fish for USA.
Yeah, I was interested to learn that as well.
Yeah, and it's not like it's, it's not like it's hundreds of years ago, it's within, not within my lifetime, but within my dad's lifetime. There was no such thing as, actually, I can tell you, there are no salmon on the Deschutes River now. That, there's no, there's no salmon on Spurgeon Creek because they can't get past the log jams on the river. So. You know, it's just something that always bothers me because you're putting people's property rights at risk for something that's supposed to be natural, but it's man-made.
Any other questions? Kevin, are you good? Can we straight?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
I moved to set a public hearing on May third, twenty twenty-three for the Terry Open Space Application.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And call the vote.
Mr. Pestinger?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Day?
Hi.
Look at that, right back on time.
Yeah. I knew that was gonna happen.
All right, um, I think the only other business is we've got staff updates and then calendar and agenda item. Uh, do you have any staff updates for us?
Yes, I do. But do you have a few staff updates? I first want to draw your attention over to this side of the room, and Tasha Knight has joined us in community planning and will be taking on planning commission duties, she'll be the administrative assistant assigned to community planning along with some other duties within CEPET, so you will see both Polly and Tasha for a few meetings, and then Tasha will take over. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I think I mentioned this last, um, meeting, is that community planning now has, is fully staffed with associate planners. And with that, and now that we have moved beyond, um, having discussions with the board on, on the docket, um, we were able to assign all of the remaining projects on the docket to all of our planners, and you just received today a copy of the, um, planning work plan for, I mentioned, for those particular projects. On the flip side, now just remember these are tentative dates, they are subject to change based on, um, staff bringing in the point and stuff, and planning commission moving through these particular projects. On the flip side is your successes. Those are the successes that planning commission has had over the last few years getting through our docket twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two dockets, it's pretty impressive. So I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of all of the work that you've done, because when they come through, it kind of feels like, uh, you know, a bit of a grind, but, and sometimes we lose the forest for the trees, so this is the forest, this has been great success, so we want to make sure that we continue on, um, which is another reason why, uh, the tentative schedule is presented to you so that you know uh, what kind of workload you're gonna have in the upcoming months here in the spring and early summer, is gonna be a bit heavier of a workload, so. Um, and then just a couple of updates, I wanted to make sure that you were all aware that the CAO agricultural activity, CAO development code changes have been adopted by the board, those were adopted on the twenty-first of March. Um, we have a public hearing for the open space program changes related specifically to the ag land eligibility that is scheduled for April fourth. No, that is come and gone, that is scheduled, I will look that up, that is incorrect. We do have a, uh, public hearing for the SMP scheduled for May fourteenth. And then next Wednesday, um, April twelfth, we are having discussion on Thurston twenty forty-five. And at that meeting, um, we will be asking the board to provide direction.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. You know, we postponed the minutes for last time because I was asking the question of sort of what happened to that recommendation that we did.
Right.
Um, what's the, what's the plan to present that, or has it been presented?
So there, there was a recommendation put together, and I believe Commissioner, or, let's see, no sign that, I will have to look in my notes, um, but that was forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners as part of their packet.
For which meeting?
For, for to, for next week's meeting, excuse me, yes.
Part of the total.
Part of their total package, yeah. Mm-hmm, is also part of the presentation that we have.
Thank you.
Yep, and that concludes my updates.
All right, thank you very much, um, any questions before we move on? All right, I will just say congratulations on staffing up, and these are not just our wins, I'm sure you know there is as well. Um, okay, moving on to calendar with agenda items. Um, I don't actually know what this agenda item means.
Um, actually, uh, the TBD will be the public participation discussion for Thurston twenty forty-five.
And I don't think we need to make any, we need to move anything here, something.
Yeah.
Just who's not gonna be here on those days? And we don't have enough people to ask.
True, that's a good point.
Um, for, for those of us in the room, let's, let's do a quick check here, um, and online. Uh, for these two dates for April nineteenth and May third, are there either of those that anybody here will miss? Okay, so I think we, we should be able to count on a quorum, at least we should. All right, um, moving on, is there anything for the good of the order? And hearing nothing.
A forty-two minute meeting is good.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.